I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our holy Father in heaven, we pause at this time to give the thanks for our life and our very big being and everything what was as it is. So thank for all the blessings you've given to us in this life. We ask your blessings now, Father, that we enter to this meeting, that we will do so with the understanding for the betterment of the cause of this community, and may make every decision be made consciously the fact that we need to improve and do what's right for our citizens. God guide and direct us tonight and always through our life, in Christ's name. Amen.
I'd like to welcome everybody out tonight. Our first meeting in our commission room, it's not really finished yet, but we're closer than we were this time last year. So we've got a lot of construction going on between here and the main office down the hallway, so hopefully by the next time, things will be a little more situated and we'll be a little more placed, so forgive our mess. Go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes.
Make a motion to adjourn minutes.
Second. We have a motion, second, and further discussion. Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's the bills.
I move to pay all bills.
Second. We have a motion, second, and further discussion. Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion passes. Excuse me. Next items, first item under old business is the water and sewer for Beaverdam Village addition.
Yes, I have the plan from my office. I guess if we go back to call session, I'll have a week and look over to approve.
Okay. The next item's approval of the second reading of the 2017-18 budget amendment.
I move to approve the second reading of the budget amendment.
Second.
We have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion passes. New business, first item's the first reading of the 2018-19 budget. I know everybody's just getting it tonight, but as you are aware, this takes two readings, so we have a first reading tonight, then we have a chance to look over and make any changes prior to our June meeting.
We'll dissect it that closely. I've moved to approve the first reading of the 18-19 budget.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, and further discussion. Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion pass.
We'll just have to look at it and bring it back if we have a question.
Well, that's pretty much standard.
Yeah.
Next item's approval of resolution 18-19 municipal road aid.
Any different we got last year in Mouta? I didn't know what we got last year.
Well, they're changing around a little bit on how they're paying it out, the governor is, but it's not a whole lot different. We don't have any choice. They give it to us and say, this is what they're going to give you.
I make a motion that we approve that resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, second, and further discussion. Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion passes. Item three is mobile, used mobile home sales, Nancy.
I just gave, handed out information to each one of you, a letter from, um, Robert Big, Boris Junior, attorney of law, and, and, and one's one who's one of the representatives of the Eazy-E pawn shop, which is the, the she, the.
She's back there.
That's what I thought.
I said, if she here. Well, she could probably tell you what she wants.
Okay. Should I go up front?
No, you can stand there. We can sit down. We don't.
Just, well, just if you want to hear it.
Okay, so, um, I've had several customers come in and like actually try to like get a loan on a mother loan, and like I've kind of like talked the idea around with my husband, and, um, we have one with a company, Copper Ridge Transport, and they move mother loans through the license and the denture, and we just thought about buying a couple that are repossessed and working on them on their lot, and then bring them to my lot to sell them because I'm not really very keen.
So you only want to bring a couple in? You're not wanting to bring like 10 or 15 in, just a couple?
No, and I agree, uh, thanks, our partner put the letters, like if we had to, we'd only display one at a time. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Whatever you, whatever would be suggested, viable.
Well, my first question was where are we going to put them all? But if it's only one or two, I see you've got enough room for those.
Yeah, on the left side of my property, like in between my building and Beaverdam buildings block.
How many businesses are there, Erica?
How many different types of businesses you can have on one lot? And that's my question, because I don't know. The, uh, this is a business three, which does allow you to have a mobile home sales lot, like you put a car lots and tractor sales lots, all that is permitted. It's not under conditional use, so none of this would fall under conditional use unless the city wanted to put conditions on this. So I didn't, I felt like I needed to refer it all to the city and to an attorney, because I cannot buy whatever and tell me how many businesses you can have on one lot. If it were residential, you could only have one main structure, meaning one home or, you know, on a lot that was residence one, but that does not refer back to business. So I don't know that answer, and so we'll let you all two give input on it. And I think I gave you some of the information that's on a big three, as well as I need to set.
Well, if she took one in on pawn and then was going to resell it, there's no doubt she could probably do that, so I'm going to see what the difference is.
Well, as far as on pawn, you know what, then it becomes part of that main business, and that's correct, and that's how we have a car lot up here for sale on other road.
But don't you have like, don't you like renting U-Hauls and stuff too? Or did you used to? I don't know if you still do or not, but I mean, you used to, isn't that? That's a different type of business, but it's still on the same principle, isn't it?
Yeah, and that's why I was asking that, because we've had so many that have started selling them all, you know, those small buildings, carports and different things, and that just kind of come in, and, and, you know, and I thought that it wasn't a problem, but so I'm just needing to find out how much you do want different businesses on one lot. I want ten. It's a big three, I mean, that's the whole thing, it's a big three.
He's kidding.
I'd be all for it if it were good business, and I wouldn't dare.
We already got a thing happening. We can't really throw the baby, can't throw the baby out of the washwater. We already got the precedent started, so.
And how does it affect the business license?
I did ask that.
Does it sell another license?
We talked about that difference, and, um, it's just an additional fee added off of the license. I questioned that too, because I thought.
I mean, you already sell vehicles, like our ATVs and stuff like that, I mean, that's considered a vehicle, so.
Well, I only sell vehicles if I repossess them. I don't have any license, so I can only sell them if I repossess them. I don't want to sell cars.
What if somebody's pawn's went off though? Have you ever taken one in on pawn?
Yeah, well, that's.
Yeah.
That would be the same.
We take possession of them if they lose on them. They're only viewed as like pledged property.
Yeah, there's a distinction between actually selling the car as opposed to doing the loan.
I didn't feel like I could make a decision on that by myself. That's why I was.
We can do car lot next.
You have to build a taller building and have it on second.
How much property is there, Erica, between?
One acre exactly.
The whole thing?
Yeah, on the date, it's like 1.00.
How much, you know how much this is?
They have three different kinds of businesses in there.
Business numbers.
Here's a picture.
But I mean, you could probably choose about the batch.
You know, there's.
You've got a job.
Sell food, whatever, that's in and out.
AV? What's your thoughts? What's your thoughts? What's your thoughts on that?
And I always make sure in my lot.
It always looks nice.
Yeah, I mean, I make sure that it looks very, very nice.
Wouldn't make sense for us with a 15 out there anyway, 10. You know, we wouldn't want any more than.
I don't want two, maybe just one.
Will you have them set up with like stairs? Would you have them set up with like stairs and things where someone could come in and look at them, so it's not like it's going to be sitting up there kind of all?
Well, yeah, I'm sure it is. It would give you as well, because.
I'm sure what was going to do there, you know, they're not going to take that grid or as smart as, you know.
Right.
So, and. I'm sure that would be met on. Sales, trailer sales, or single sale.
Because you'd never have more than one.
Or two.
Or two, at most, on a lot of the time.
The question is whether it's included in a primary use. And it is, as she's, as Nancy's indicated, is, it's, as a structure, is very broad, and it, I think clearly is to be revisited as to what it says.
Okay.
But the way it's worded now, we have nothing to prevent this business license being sold.
Oh, yeah, we have to approve it.
We'd have to prove it.
I think, I think you can limit how it's going to be used. Now, whether, uh, whether you're talking about a single trailer at a time or multiple trailers at a time, I think you can, I think you can designate what that's going to be. In other words, not more than a trailer at a time, not more than five trailers at a time.
Yeah, I think Erica said that she wouldn't want more than two.
Yeah, I think he was right.
Then I think it's up to the city to determine whether or not you're going to allow two trailers to be located on that property of that size with other activities going on there. I think that's something y'all have got to decide.
Are you going to move the U-Hauls to the back or the other side?
Yeah, and I don't think the, the taco truck or the Salvadorian, I don't think that they're going to be there anymore. So I'm probably going to move the U-Hauls to outside, and then just keep them along on the left side. I think that they're going to have to stay at the, um, Hispanic's four.
Yeah.
If you do allow it, allow it, then one thing I would say is because you do have so many things that come close to the road, and then they come a little closer to the road, and then they come a little closer to the road. Something that large means to stay back from the road, like 25 feet at least, because your building should always be 25 feet. You, uh, in a big three, you need to have that setback so that nobody's blocked from pulling in and out and backing out of these other businesses as well. So you could put some stipulations on it. I don't see why you couldn't, if you decided to do that and state exactly how many.
Yeah, so I mean, the primary reason for people coming to your lot through the trailer, they're going to buy it from our lot, right? So they, you pretty much just like show the home in a sense like a realtor. Okay, so I mean, you know, the nicer home you show, they're, okay. And I don't, I'm glad, I'm kind of learning, you know, too, as this whole thing is going on, so. I was just thinking, how much traffic would that cause? You know, two trailers, you know, I mean, you have people pulling up, because I see her point as far as the concern, you got people, you know, coming in to get U-Haul trailers, you know, you got somebody renting it, somebody checking one in, you got pawn shop, you know, so I understand that, that's why I was, um, you could essentially kind of guide your traffic, you know, like say you're going to show the home at a time when you're certain.
Well, you also have two entrances, which would be one from one side and one from the other. That kind of helps separate.
I'm sure having multiple businesses at one structure, which I was, like you said at the beginning, so I was just kind of thinking out loud, which is not all the time smart, but, yes.
Mr. Conway, I think he could tell you that this letter that we did, it's, it's not conclusive as far as stating exactly, because, you know, it said, I don't, you know, we just want to understand the primary business, we do not intend to change that, and it says for sale vehicles or mobile homes. Well, you're not really selling vehicles are there because you are taking them in, and that's part of the business, is taking them in and getting the titles, or, I didn't understand that, I'm just questioning.
No, no, we could sit to do a loan on, you know, value other than the deed of property. So, you know, the trailer isn't collateral that, you know, for us, it's a low risk loan. We'd be able to, you know, loan on that, um, you know, in the event that we don't get paid back, that would be something that we could sell rather fast, which I believe kind of in all times end together.
Well, I was kind of saying, you do take a mobile home, you do take a car in with it as far as the, uh, the business that you're running right now.
Yes, we can, that's correct.
And then sell it. I can see that, but the mobile home's not taken in the same way. It's a purchase for sale. Is that a difference?
Well, it says here, it's a repossession.
When is the next commission meeting?
Next month, maybe?
June.
Not, not this commission.
We just have one last week, so it's the second Thursday of each month.
Well, our interpretation, it does just affect C of Beaverdam, if you understand what I'm saying.
Excellent.
Because there's, there's two communities involved, and there's a planning commission.
Uh huh.
And, and over the years, I don't, everybody understands, I know Larry understands, that the issue of mobile homes, placement of mobile homes in the communities has been an ongoing issue and is still an ongoing issue. So it would seem to me that, that before the city takes any action on it, that there'll be some understanding as between the two municipalities and the commission about how this is being interpreted, because if we interpret it one way, that doesn't necessarily mean Hartford's going to interpret it the same way, or even that would be the feeling of the commission.
Well, I think my understanding is it would have to come through your office commission first anyway, wouldn't it, for?
Well, this, in this instance like this, I'm just asking clarification. I couldn't find it in our own ministry to make it clear to me what to do.
So I think that's going to take the discussions with Hartford and, and then the commission, all three, to determine it, because it's something, I say ours may be different, but technically, we'd have to come through you all first and then come back to the city, so.
Should, do you feel that they should be made aware of our feelings on it? Because I'm fine with it, because Erica does keep her property looking nice, and so it's, since this is going to be a Beaverdam business, which you guys may have different opinions, we do it right now, man, that's, that's fine too. Should that be a part of going into the planning and zoning, or let planning and zoning go through all of there?
I think they need to go through theirs and with the city first.
Well, this is a little bit different in that most of, most of the other discussions and deals with mobile homes have been placing for people to live in.
Yeah.
This has absolutely nothing to do with that. This is just an extra item that a business wants to sell.
When you do this, you have to think about too, that you may have someone with another business.
This is, this is the precedent you're setting for something down the road.
Yeah, and I, you know, it might not be a cyclical spot, but I still couldn't turn it down because it's, you know, because it's been approved to be done, so that makes it harder too.
That's the problem with.
The ordinance is lacking.
The ordinance is broad, of which it almost has to be.
Right.
To cover all of the various, uh, subtopics, but mobile homes in particular, and I'm not saying this adverse to y'all's interest at all, but mobile homes has been an ongoing issue.
For years.
Keith's right, it's been primarily a concern about placement, uh, on residential lots, but, but it just seems to me that, that the one thing that's got to be true here is, however this is being interpreted, the commission's got to agree this is the way it is, and the municipalities have got to be on board. If, if, by example, the conclusion is we need to put broader or more restrictive language, either one in it, it needs to be done, because I don't remember it coming up in this context before. I know we've had, we've had mobile home operations before where the primary thing was the sale of mobile homes and used mobile homes, but that's not what we're talking about here. And, and, uh, it just seems to me there's, there needs to be some clarity with the commission and among both communities, so that we're on, everybody's on the same page.
Yeah, I mean, we would want everybody on the same page.
Man, I'm like Sandy, I don't think there's a problem. I don't have a problem with y'all selling them, but again, I want the ordinance to read right, because you don't want y'all to have trailers and this business to have trailers and that business, oh, and after, you know, everybody has some, selling them, and then that would be a problem, and I think that's the big concern is. So there would be stipulation, that's why I say y'all get the planning and zoning, have them look at and see what you think on it.
Well, that, you know, sometimes I'll bring things before the board, and they'll say, well, you read it, what do you think? I don't want to think about this, because it is, like I said, I think it's, needs to be taken on, by somebody older than me.
But again, you have.
Because there's a question I have about whether you have to have a license to sell mobile homes like you do a car lot, and what kind of stipulations are with that? Is there a certain size of the lot? I don't know.
Well, there are used cars, and there's used car, and I'm, I'm getting a little bit ahead of myself and out of my bound. My bound is to look at this and to give you all the best advice I can give you, which is, I think there needs to be clarity in what the, the ordinance says, the, and the two cities need to be on the same page. But, but one reason I feel that way is there are, as I say, there are used cars, and there are used cars, there's used cars that look good, and there are used cars that don't look so good. There are mobile homes that look really good, and mobile homes that don't look.
And we've had that issue before.
So, so whatever goes in here needs to be understood.
And that's when you were asking about.
I know, but that's what we have to.
Both communities, and the commission, I think, yeah.
And it is hard, because we are, we would have to vote on something that also Hartford has to agree to, because they are part of the, part of the.
I think what we just need to do is have discussions with the city of Hartford and with planning and zoning, and get everybody on the same page and see where we're at and go from there.
I agree with you. That's my work ethic.
So that you're not hanging in the air, can, you think we can get that done to the next meeting, so that they can get it through?
Oh, yeah, surely.
I mean, tell me, you said the last Thursday of the month, y'all.
Second Thursday. Second Thursday, we met last week. But I can call them, and get them to start advising them what I want them to research, you know, and I send out email and tell them this is what I want them to talk to, or that, themselves, before they have to come in.
We'll get that process started immediately then. Okay, next item's approved remodel invoice for Beaverdam Bill's plan, which we do this one separate just because it is under contract.
You have a copy?
You're welcome.
Thank you all. Should have been in the package.
I don't, never seen that.
Do you not have an invoice in the package?
I didn't have any in my package.
I asked for it, and you didn't.
She what?
She said she put it in your box.
I didn't have one in my box either.
It's $91,000.
Oh.
Well, that's part of their contract, so it's just a formality we have to go through.
I move through the remodeling invoice.
We have a motion, second, and further discussion? Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item's to put up Eddie Groves as a new appointee to the code enforcement board.
Make a motion to accept Eddie Groves to the code enforcement board?
Second.
We have a motion, second, and further discussion? Those in favor signify with a aye. Post same. Motion passes. Next item is annexation issue, Nathan? I wasn't sure, but I kind of thought maybe that was. Nathan has contacted us, you purchased the property?
Yeah, I've got the, I have to.
Okay, he, at some point, I don't even know when it was, there was a piece of property out on Taylor Mine Road, taken into the city limits.
My old farm and ground.
Track three, this is in the city limits. Taylor Mine Road took this in the city limits. This is, Evans is on this, didn't he?
Oh, that's up on the curve.
Uh huh.
Okay, now I got you. It really goes up to Taylor Mine Road like this. Yeah, I got you. We had discussion with that one, he wanted a super rip there.
Yeah.
How big is this? How big is the property?
It's a little over an acre and a half.
He's wanting annexed into the city?
No, they wanted to take it out of the city, you know.
I would prefer to get it out of the city limits if it could be all possible, because actually, you can see on the map right there, there's a plot of land that says Laverne Lightings Jr. on there. That is actually where I live at right now, and it is owned by my granddad at the present moment, but I'm eventually going to either inherit it or buy it, or whatever I've got to do to get that property is family ground, and it actually jumped family ground to get that annexed in.
Yeah, they went up, they went up the highway.
Yeah, and I would assume, because everything's going to join there, I'd like to have everything out of city limits if possible. And it's also got a graveyard on it. I don't know what the rules and stipulations are on a graveyard within city limits. I don't know if the city has to maintain a graveyard in city limits.
A little family, the old Austin cemetery, and that's, the family's gone, it's, you may have to get somebody, you know, some community, there's a lot of committees, am I going to do that? But.
I didn't know, I was just kind of curious upon that.
I'll give you a name. Do you know Ray McLean?
How's that?
I'll get you his phone number. That's who I would call.
Jackie Barrett, either one, or Jackie Barrett, either one.
Well, I just, Ray's the one I talked about a lot of time. There, there is a Ohio County Cemetery Committee, and they don't necessarily take care of them, but they are, they're trying to record all of them and track all of them, and they do help. I know they've gotten some funding and some help from inmate labor to keep stuff cleaned up at least ever so often.
Yeah.
And he's aware of that one, because I know, I know a lady at Wilma.
Yeah.
Is a relation, all that, so. Now, are you wanting to, did I remember in the, our text back and forth, you wanted to put cattle on it?
No, I really, so much cattle, if I was wanting to run some goats on the back of where I live right now.
I know where you're going to get them.
If I can include all that, there'd be two acres of run right there.
But my, I'm going to be honest with you, my personal opinion is I would, I would be hard pressed to be willing to take it out. However, I would be more than happy to, to work with you as far as, I don't know if it's rezoning, agriculture, a waiver or something, because we've got some other property in the city that has got, I mean, we've got some with horses and stuff on it, because they go through that process. My only, and the only reason I say that is because if anything ever, like the Brown property, if anybody or further back ever tried to decide to develop anything, there's no way for them to ever do it and annex into the city without, if this is taken out, because it, everything has to join now. I don't know when this was brought into the city. Do you, Mary, do you have any idea?
About 12 years ago.
Yeah, it's been several years.
I don't think we've ever actually taken anything out of the city limits once it's in, but I don't see where there'd be any problem getting it rezoned agricultural.
What, you just purchased it?
I purchased it a couple months ago.
Okay, what was the use since the time you purchased it?
It's just a field.
Well, I was going to say that was, when you purchased it, if it was being used for farm, you know, that had some horses on it, or some type of, uh, field that you.
Tobacco base?
It ain't got no tobacco base on it. I mean, it should, it was just a vacant lot, and we bought it, and the reason why we bought the land is to keep people from building behind us.
Oh, I understand.
I, I want to keep as much ground, and if the brown place ever come up for sale, I could get it, I'm buying it too.
You understand that?
Are you talking about Esther, the one lives up on the hill?
Just Carl?
Billy Carl.
Oh, okay.
I was just trying to see if it could have grandfathered in, where he could use it for farm.
Is this lot right next to the house where Fulton used to live? You're talking about?
Yeah, it's right behind.
They used to, they used to farm that.
I would say we could.
It was all farm ground right there.
Now, did they, what, they lease it out and farm it every year?
It's been a long time since.
Okay, I know they used to lease it.
I mean, that.
You take it out, you, any day, like anyone, then you'll never get it.
It's not a residential, it's.
Probably R1.
Everything comes in, it's R1.
It would have come in that way probably, and if it'd never been rezoned, it'd automatically come in as R1, unless they're.
How hard would it be to zone it agriculture?
I don't know what's around it from just looking at that.
That wouldn't be any prob, well.
There's a farm.
He owns, or on two sides of it, and Brown has the other two sides of it, and I don't see them having an issue.
Brown's got a tobacco base right there. It's farm and hay. Across the street is my granddad's place, and it's got a cornfield, bean field on it.
Yeah, but it's only a city on one side, isn't it? What's your property you're talking about, just one side?
Just the street.
Just the street side.
And the property itself.
You know, if you have an agricultural, you decided you wanted to build a home on it or something like.
You can still, you can do that.
Unless one of your neighbors just threw a real fit, you shouldn't have any problems to get rezoned agriculture. You could go for cows or whatever you want.
Trying to find some way where you didn't have it.
County, county, county.
Because of saying that it's been used for best use or.
The city comes right up the road.
So it's just, if it was used for best use, that makes the.
Well.
Had a Billy go on it.
It goes this way, doesn't it?
We got a Billy go.
That was my point.
I've got a garden on it.
We got a city.
We can bring it in that.
Let's take a head of mine in the city in order to get this.
Right over here, our lot here is. We went up, rode here to, yeah, I remember that happened because they asked for a super.
But it's probably.
You want this whole area here taken out? I don't know, they would put in the house.
No.
We put this, right table plan, we put no holes on it.
The original annex, it's R one.
It is on just two sides, two sides of.
See, these are county.
Yeah.
County, 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 that's.
Yeah, that house wasn't taken in.
That's, yeah, that's all county.
If it had some kind of farm, they could rezon it.
I don't think it'd be any problem. Yeah, I don't, well, just the one neighbor and I, Billy Carl's not gonna object.
He's not gonna object to it. Didn't rezon, you won't get any objection.
And see, the reason we don't want you to take it out of the city because like you said, if somebody on the other side of you decided, hey, we want to be in the city, still it's not gonna affect you because you're gonna still be zoned agriculture, but they can get in the city and be zoned residential.
Okay, now I've got a question for this then. If we do that, can I run a water line up there and not have sewer? If it's zoned agriculture?
Yeah, you can have water.
Water and sewer got nothing to do with it.
Yeah, it's nothing to do with it, yeah.
Okay, that's, my favorite thing is I want to be able to use the ground, you know, as I see it fit.
Sure.
And I'm restricted right there.
You're, you're not wanting on sewer.
No.
You don't have to.
Okay.
Because you got enough ground out there.
Yeah, and the water, you could say you're using that for your agriculture.
Yeah, exactly, that's it.
And, and I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
But that's what I would do, it'd be the quickest and.
You want it rezoned or you want to just let it stay as?
Yeah, well.
I think it's just be.
I'm okay with the, yeah, I'm okay with the grandfather.
Would it say it's grandfather?
Okay, that's fair enough.
Can we do that, Nancy?
Yes, because if it's an empty lot and you says the thing used it for best use or they had garden on it or anything like that.
Let's say just a lot.
Then it would continue the use until somebody went in and, and did something different with it.
Let's just change it then, let's just say it was agriculture.
I would say leave it.
I'd say leave it, just go ahead and farm on it.
Leave it in the city that way.
Yeah, I think it'd be better for everybody involved because it's not gonna affect you anyway, but it could affect us down the road. Because if somebody comes on you and they say we want a residential and you're not in the city, we're gonna have to annex you too. And then it becomes a hassle.
Once you go further down the road.
Right, if they go, and, and they know that we may never go down the road, but I'm just saying.
It, it is a hassle sometimes to annex. It's even more of a hassle to de-annex.
Yeah.
And, and one advantage that Nathan got, actually, he can continue to use it, do what he wants to, and he's a young fellow, he can't, he can't fathom that thirty, forty years down the road, it might be hugely beneficial to be in the city. Uh, so, the de-annexing is a, is a, is a big deal. So if we can keep it in the city and let him.
I mean.
Yeah.
I understand that you guys ain't gonna let me take it out.
Yeah, no, but I mean, are you okay with turning it over to agriculture? That's a lot.
Yeah, that's fine, that's.
Did you come into the office, instead of making a go through rezon?
I just, if you can do a grandfather, I'd much rather do that.
We wrote up a letter and you come in and sign it and then every year I'll drive by and see, well, he's still farming, he's still got that for best use or whatever. And like I said, that wouldn't stop you from putting, from putting a home on it because on an agricultural piece, you can have a home on it.
Okay, so I could build a home there on it?
Oh, yeah.
And I could buy beside the bill on there and it still would not take my usage?
Right.
But you have to use it for a farm.
That's fine.
So I can say yes.
Well, just an empty field can take care of that.
Flatiron corn, I mean, you know.
That's for best use because that's grass.
Yeah, best use and grass, take care of it, so.
If you make a decision, just call me and come in down here and roll by and take it in every, every so often I'll drive by and look and see and I'll just notice, you can every year and say.
And we have a few others that are in the same situation and that's what she does. I mean, it's not a problem with us.
I mean, I just don't want to get R one because I've been, I've been doing a lot of research, there's a lot of restrictions on R one that I, it's not gonna be feasible for me.
Right, well, he doesn't.
Well, you're still gonna be R one, but we're gonna grandfather the.
Agriculture use.
Part of it is, so it doesn't affect you.
Come back and see me.
Do you have any other contact information directly?
Clear as mud. It's a clear as mud.
Oh, that was an easy one.
Took me a while to realize who they were, but they both used to attend the daycare that I owned. I kept sitting here looking, kind of figure them out, and I was like, hey, I don't know.
Does that make you feel old, Sandy?
Yeah, yeah, because they were probably like three or four or something.
Long time ago.
I call in the mornings, I call in the afternoons, and I'm staying late, you know, after hours at work where I can do, so if you want to take off work.
I'll just give you follow along. All right, thank you guys.
Thank you all, no problem. You want to, you need this spot?
Thanks.
Fisher, we'll start with you.
If you all are gonna go to the club session, could you talk about it, does happen out of the, once you go on the way through, just kind of give some details about the concert? How many you all think there were? Were there any issues, arrests, or anything?
Well, I saw on Facebook there was an arrest, but I wasn't aware of an arrest.
Yeah, I saw.
There was no arrest, but.
I wondered from the source. Did they know or so there wasn't any arrest?
Am I right, there was no arrest?
Somebody got asked toward that, they weren't arrested. Uh, what was the, do you have an idea what the final total was?
We're estimating about forty-two hundred, forty-two to forty-three hundred.
And no, no issues security wise or anything, nothing?
Certainly didn't appear.
Not really, uh, we've got some kinks to work out for one that size, but we anticipated that.
I saw several online, I don't know, it could have just been blown up, but beer ran out awful quick, or was running.
We didn't run out of beer.
I don't know that it ran out awful quick, they just drank a whole.
The lines got very long.
Well, maybe they thought that, that it was, because I saw several that said, you know, John Prine hasn't been come on stage and they're running out of beer or something like that, that could have just been.
Well, they did run out of margaritas really early.
And I will say Paul was right that Budweiser did not give us credit because Budweiser was way low on where they thought we should be. Paul fussed at them and they brought it up, they actually tripled it.
From, but they had Friday morning and they tripled, more than tripled.
And we ran out still.
Well, but we didn't run out, that's just it, we went, got.
We got more.
I know, but we, that needs to be clarified, so we don't, we didn't run out.
The new concession stand?
It was great. It was great.
Larry, you can probably talk more about that than anybody.
I don't want to talk about that concession stand no more, it's busy.
I saw several pictures and, and it looked like there were lines all around it, so it looked like you were getting your use out of it.
We, we designed, had a gentleman design handrails to kind of herd people in and out, and I think we're gonna do the same on the beer.
Yes, we are.
Uh, it made it so much better for us, so.
Well, I said, we got some kinks to work out. Uh, overall, I was pretty pleased with how things work, went. We tried something different with the levels, ticket levels and the, the gold circle seating and the VIP seating, and, and there were some people that didn't much like that. I had, but I had some people said they got in there and they bought VIP, when they got there, they saw the hillside looked really good and they thought they could see better, so they moved up to the hillside. I heard some, some people complain, and that's what I don't understand, you go on Facebook, social media, some people say, well, they couldn't hear very good up there, then the very next thing would be best sound we've ever heard at a concert. So I'm like, I don't know which one of y'all was drunk. Obviously not the one that was hearing it because they enjoy it, so.
Did the artists have anything to say about?
Loved it, absolutely loved it. Prine, because I was, Tracy and I went backstage and met Prine right after the show and met him and spoke with him and his wife for a few minutes, and then I was with them again later that night with Heath on the bus eating birthday cake. And they just couldn't get over the fact of what we had in Beaver Dam. And of course, you heard Matt Jones even talking about Kate, and of course, he wasn't even sure where Beaver Dam was, but.
And I don't listen to him a lot, but he tends to not be a very complimentary person from what I've heard. So I thought he was extremely complimentary.
Yeah.
That's what it is then.
He's a lawyer.
He's a lawyer.
And he's a contractor thing, and so I'm, we're, he and I are good.
Well, you heard him mention, he said that Tyler Childers twinned out, that was probably the best night of his life because he got to sing Paradise with John Prine.
Well, even, even Prine's wife told us this is one of the largest crowds they've performed to. They don't go to big arenas and stuff, that's generally not where they go.
I think that's the biggest crowd they have on this tour.
We're waiting right now and I can't say a whole lot, but we may have another announcement to come from this Prine concert. Nothing about them coming back, I've already heard they're coming back next year, but some things.
For this year?
No.
Or for next year?
Well, for next year, we're not, we're not worried about next year yet, but some.
So for this?
Some things we're working on right now that they may have an announcement to make.
For this year?
Mm-hmm, not for a show, but just for something for the community, I think. I think that will show how much they thought of the community.
Uh.
And the venue.
Destin, do you have any questions? I'm pretty good. I have one more, but keep going, I forgot what it was. We kept talking about everything else, I forgot what, there was just one thing. I just know I followed along on social media and I saw way more good things.
And historically, if you think about it on social media, the ones who had a real good time are the ones, not the ones who usually go post. The only ones that post are the ones who have a gripe, and we had one guy that had a gripe to the point we almost had an issue. He grabbed me one more time, he was gonna have a real issue. Uh, but, and he's been on Facebook and I don't know what more we could have done. He kept telling me, he said, I know I'm drunk, but, I'm like, yeah, but.
No excuse.
But we, but that was, to my knowledge, really the only issue that.
Well, then you say, well, then you won't remember it.
Could have got, could have got out of hand.
Won't feel the same.
But, uh, like I said, we had all kinds of compliments on there, the, the management teams really liked it. Of course, Tyler Childers is coming back in August and he's excited because he gets to bring his whole band and they're really excited about what they get to do and the potential they have for the concert.
And the next show is Oak Ridge.
Oak Ridge, June first.
Friday night again.
That's my problem with it, with or without this.
And it's, I will say, Larry didn't want to comment too much on the, on the new building. It helps. There's a lot more room, it's a lot easier access. We get the kinks worked out on the sales of the beer and a couple of other things. Listen, it's, it's gonna be a great venue. And like I said, it's our fir, we'd had never had a concert that size before.
Yeah.
And just the small little kinks we had, we can fix those. There wasn't anything major I saw happen.
Heard people talking about they were impressed with the way the crowd control, the traffic, going out, y'all what, about forty-five minutes, fifty minutes, had everybody out? Because I, it was almost as quick as one of the smaller concerts, and I was.
Social media someone said they could play. They used to direct traffic in the backfield out there, so.
Yeah.
I wondered if y'all was gonna do that out back, back, back way.
Did you all use that for parking?
The backfield.
Backfield.
I sat my car for about thirty minutes before I got out, but maybe that's just me. I was, I was in a bad spot, but it was.
Well, but again.
But y'all did get a lot of fun. Once I got in line to actually move out, it wasn't that bad. Um, are you guys still doing the golden circle part for all the concerts, the different ticket levels?
Not all of them, we're doing it for this one, we did it for this one, we're doing it for the eighties and July concert.
I thought you did for Oak Ridge Boys too, didn't you?
No, no, and we're doing it for Lee Bryce and for Turnpike Troubadour in September. Uh, that was something new, but that was something.
And they also catered to them at the tables, so that was, they had many of those.
I never heard of the golden circle thing, but I guess that's something.
This was the first show we've ever done it.
But I guess it's something that in the past has been done, I mean, it wasn't like, he invented, it wasn't like he invented something, it's.
Oh, no, we just invented, we just came up, I don't know how the golden circle name even came up, but.
Well, I mean, I heard, I listened to a podcast the other day, and they were talking about the golden circle section of the crowd, so I guess it's.
And a lot of that depends, like for the eighties show, it's not gonna be in the front where this one was, it's gonna kind of be on both corners and sides of the stage because of the mosh pit they want for the eighty, eighties band.
Well, they did mention, I know Matt Jones mentioned Skid Row, the Shannon, their DJ up there, so Skid Row's down there, so y'all go see him, so.
Well, I, I know there was some concern, and some people commented on standing in line to get in the gate and didn't get to see all of Childers. I was at the gate, Childers was supposed to go on at seven o'clock, and he was a little late going on because there was a lot going on. When it was seven oh five, I started asking people as they were coming in and having their tickets scanned, how long they'd been in line, and I was getting fifteen, maybe twenty minutes. So I come back to it and, and Joe Beth was a little concerned, we've got all these people and they're gonna miss it, and I'm like, well, you know, you can't expect to come to any kind of concert and park your car and then expect to get in and seated and your refreshments and sit down and wait for the first song in fifteen minutes. If you do, you're never gonna make it. So I can't, I can't be disappointed in the way that worked. Now, if they'd come up and tell me we was in there for forty-five minutes to an hour at seven o'clock, I'd have concern.
It's gonna be locked in, but for most part, if you don't expect to be there by the time the doors open, you can expect to be waiting.
Well, we thought of some ideas in the ID tent that might speed things along a little bit too.
I think we've talked, we've probably talked about some of those because we've got several things, and we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow to kind of.
I think people kind of think that once you all have decided you're doing something, that you're never gonna adapt or a lot of times things to make anything easier, it's, well, that's the way they're doing it, but of course, you've got to, you know, your biggest crowd, you're going to find some things that maybe you hadn't seen in the past that you can use going forward to make everything.
Well, for example, one thing, one problem we had, and we're gonna, it's just gonna take some more people acting as ushers, when they would come in for the general admission and they'd come up this side and get right above the wall, they just stopped right there. This whole half the hillside was empty and this one was packed because it just, it's kind of like when they come into the parking lot at the ball, the ball field, we're gonna first park the first parking lot, then we're gonna start parking up in the grass and up and then we're gonna start parking up in the grass and up inside the field instead of driving around another fifty or sixty feet.
So, do you think, you said around quarter to two hundred, you could have, did you put more in there?
Oh, yeah.
You got to five? Did you get over five?
I said because of the volunteers, I expected, I expected, we had several, we had several volunteers. I told Paul, I thought probably with the volunteers and everything, it was about forty-four, fifty. Cause I figured we had two hundred and fifty volunteers.
I heard someone said that they all kinda sat over on one side of the, I thought, well, maybe the, the screen was up there, so I couldn't figure it out. But if, if people were just walking, then they were just all lining up on one side.
It's just like if everybody came here and you came in that door and you sat there, well, that means the next person sat there, 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 and there. And then they start coming around back here while that whole back corner is empty.
Yeah.
That's exactly what.
I'd say, well, yeah.
And I don't know how to, I just, that just floors me.
You'd almost have to have ushers just kinda, like you do out in the parking lot. You wave the cars through.
That was not something we really anticipated on that hillside like that.
And you bigger people would.
I mean, well, you, you can see it. It, you know, on the flat part down there, we've had that trouble before. They come in and start and not go on around. But on the hillside, you can see, when you're walking in, you see this whole empty hillside and you stop right here.
There wasn't a place to sit with nobody around you.
What about the person, we're not gonna set up there.
Oh, they eventually got over there.
Oh, okay.
But it was, it was sparse. I mean, it was still sparse. You could've gotten, got another thousand in there, couldn't we? Easily.
Have to figure it out. So they can get to the beverage area faster?
Probably.
Have to figure out who we can get in there and get five, six thousand.
That's been brought up too. And I told, next time I go up to South Bend to a football game, I'm gonna tell Notre Dame, they have to put their concession stand by my seat, cause I don't wanna walk.
Well, and later thing, uh, went well and you had a good crowd. I'm, I'm, I'm like, I'm like Larry and maybe some police force, I'm ready for five and six thousand.
We expect you to be there working with us.
Yeah.
You're a volunteer.
I was sent to watch the concert.
We, we used to volunteer, you to help.
I happen to be out town, I just remember.
Chris can.
Uh, the whole thing, talking about the traffic on it, one of the things that kinda hurts there was a semi truck along the way to Lawrence, they drove in right there for the Baptist church.
I didn't know that until yesterday afternoon.
So, they, they tied up a whole lot of the traffic.
Well, no wonder. I noticed that they were parked probably down here on Main Street and then I saw them, cause I went through here. I don't know, about nine thirty.
Was there any on this parking lot?
I don't know. I, I went through the dark, so I didn't even look in here, but I know they were up and down the streets and then the, you know, over by railroad tracks. And then about the farthest I saw them was the Beaver Down Park, Beaver Down Baptist Church parking lot, it's pretty full. And the only thing I kinda noticed is it was really dark and I was like, you know, this could be, if someone wanted to come in here and try to knock a few windows out, look for stuff, but, uh.
Nah, I was riding around.
Well, I wondered. I kinda figured you all were probably patrolling around otherwise. But, uh, no, I noticed there were a lot of cars and I, and the whole place was full. I thought, well, looks like they had their, or you spoke tickets, you know what you're gonna have.
Yeah, and like I said, I still don't know what the back parking lot had.
It was, uh, from the tree line there where your little triangle pieces you talking about, all the way to the edge of the property, over half the field.
There's only about half of it was, was used, so.
How did people know to go back there and park?
They built a road.
We built a road.
But I mean, how did?
Our department.
They were directing traffic. Where people parked them.
I gotcha. I'm following you now. Yeah. I was thinking coming in off of Bruce School Road. I'm thinking, how did Joe from Montana to.
They all came through the park.
Yeah, yeah.
There was one guy from out state.
I'm picturing it now.
At Bruce School and, and he's like, how do you think they're, that, my app is saying I'm here. I said, well, y'all just right there, just go over there, they're parking. And he went over and didn't have to wait in line, you know, from two thirty one in, so.
So, how many records you can park in that field?
Twenty-four, five hundred, pretty easy.
I, oh, yeah. I believe we can get four fifty in there.
That'll, that'll sure, take the little burden off of the other parking lot and having to park up and then, but you know, you, we go Cincinnati Red Ball Games. We're in a hotel. We gotta walk ten blocks or more to get to the park, I mean.
And we squeezed in the grass.
Walking to a concert is part of going to a concert.
Explain that to some of the people around here.
Well, the interesting part was, of all the people we talked to that night, the only ones that complained about the parking to walk were the people that lived here. I had a lot of people from out of town talk, and then I had some people come up and said, that was a really great idea where you emailed us the map that showed where different parking places were at. And then I had some that said, well, we never got the email. Then one guy came back and he said, I have to apologize to you. I went back and looked and I did get one, I just didn't open it.
We went to a Reds game in Kentucky.
Oh, I do that every time. We cross the bridge.
I mean, you go to a concert in the Young Center, there's no parking there. You always, you just have to look to find a garage.
Or find somebody drop you off and come back.
The Ford, the Ford Center in Evansville, you park all over downtown Evansville. You're, you're a good gosh, long way away from the venue.
Parking would be.
So, like I said, the, the people who came from out of town that go to concert, they had, I didn't have any, hear any issues with them from.
And they were from everywhere too.
Well, good.
Forty states and a hundred and two or three Kentucky counties, Australia and Canada.
Yeah, I saw that.
And Virginia has the prettiest license. Their driver's license are lavender.
My old daddy was talking about, loved when somebody seen that going, they handed her a passport for their ID.
I had one lady with a passport also.
Well, I'll wear that up for you.
Yeah, Tommy? If you or Mike would be available tomorrow night, five fifteen, we're having a little meeting right here. And, and Chris with the, the parking, just why it's still kinda fresh on anything we might need to think about doing. The, of course, the next concert won't be this big, but we've got another one coming up in July and we wanna be ready for it, so.
Does that eighties?
Does, Nancy, have anything else?
No, thank you all for listening, James.
Okay.
Uh, got maybe one thing, this may be a question for A B. We had some, two or three times in the last two or three rears, years, we've had problems with somebody that has some sort of sewage problem or whatever and it, like, uh, uh, stopped up sewer that they don't clean out or whatever. And it's actually had sewage running over on other people's property. And we had, it's, we've had a terrible time getting anything done about it. Uh, the health department's, if, I don't think they'll do anything anymore. I just wondered, can we modify our ordinance some to where if there is a problem and it's not fixed, we can turn our water off?
Um, help me, there's sewage coming from here.
Like, your property, you're here and I'm here, and your sewage backs up and it starts running over into my property.
I understand that. We're talking about people that, it's obvious, you're, you're not talking about a leak from, from, from our system.
No, well, an individual say they have a bad sewer line and it's oozing over on their next door neighbors. And the next door neighbor wants something done about it and you call the health department and they fail to do anything.
Yeah, but it's not, it's not, it's not why, it's not part of the system that the city is responding to.
It's not a city issue, really.
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Well, first of all, I think you can probably, um, take a complaint if in fact they're spilling over onto your property and, and you have complained and you don't know anything about it. Though, I, actually, you might be able to take a criminal complaint depending on exactly what's happening.
Code enforcement officer said it, says that it's not in his field that he don't mess with.
Well, it depends on, it depends on what the, I don't know whether it's in the code or not. It certainly could be included in the code if you choose to include it in the code. But, but, uh, the, the health department is, is the other location. And then thirdly, you've got civil action you can file against them. If necessary, clean it up. It's, it's an effect. It's not, it's, it's, it is a nuisance, uh, at best. So, there's, if it's not in the code of enforcement, or if you want to equip it, you could. Secondly, you certainly have a civil, and I don't, I don't, I can't speak for that. I have no idea what the health department would do. But I would assume, cause it clearly is a health issue, that, that if they're not doing something, they should.
Well, there's a, there's a, two residences on Second Street and the sewer from the one residence is running over into the other residence. That's been going on for two or three years. I believe we've called the health department several times down there.
Yep. I thought you had somebody.
I called Division of Water. My inspector was in town. He would've talked to them and resolved the problem, but I'm, I'm assuming it's come back. This ain't probably come back.
Same place. Was their collection line broken? I mean, ours isn't stopping up though.
It's not the colle-, it's the gray water.
He's, he's got, he's got a, a line going out, taking his washing machine water out and dumping across the property.
I don't think you can do that in town anymore.
Well, let, let me ask a couple of questions.
It don't smell like.
They're, they're on the, they're on the city sewer crack. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, they're, they're paying for city sewer services and they're on city water. Is that correct?
But they're still putting their gray water out in the yard. I didn't have to get it.
But you think it's more than gray water?
It smells a whole lot worse than any gray water.
Well, it would seem, it would seem to me that, that, that you could pass, say, if you, we don't already have one, you could pass an ordinance that, that would allow, in circumstances where, uh, they are spilling sewage, uh, through their own fair to ma-, maintain and it continues for whatever period of time after they're notified, that you can cut their services off both.
Well, this doesn't happen very often, but it, there's usually one ongoing case all the time on it. And we had trouble getting anything done about it.
Well, I, 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 I think you could put an ordinance in place where you can cut their services off. I think it makes perfect sense. That's probably the simplest.
Well, it's running over into a rental, but it's not, not coming around a rental.
Cause I thought it was a rental. If you get the services off, it's gonna.
Anybody to draft an ordinance?
Please, cause I think we need to do something. I can't understand why they didn't call in the code enforcement. It's a nuisance.
Uh, after everything else failed, we called him and he said, that's Larry's problem. He don't do water.
Not putting gray water in the sewer.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
No.
Just a couple of ditches. And do you know where Bobby Lindsay lives on Ridge Chris? Okay, you can look up his address though. And if you don't care to drive by, you can still check it out. I have not had the chance to. Was going to before I came to the meeting tonight, but he's got some ditch problems there. I think it's probably about like the other ditch problems that we have in town. We just got a bunch of old ditches and.
He live up on our end of Ridge Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's across from David Jolins?
Somewhere in there, one of those houses.
Next to where hers.
And then the tile, mm, there, by Stephanie Sanford's. Um, I talked to her daughter the other day and I think they're getting ready to move in there with her mom. And she said the ground is just eroding away. And I thought you might just check that out and.
Where at?
You know where Stephanie lives there on, is it Barnes?
The corner.
Two twenty-two Barnes.
He used to go there though.
For a different reason though.
The ditch in the rubbing?
Yeah. It's, there, there was a, the tile hadn't been there that long and then I think it was, it was that big dip that I kept on saying. If we made the dip, we need to fix it back. Remember that one? Yeah. I thought you might just check it out and see if there are any solutions there. Rita's coming and going. She lives in Mount Washington, but told me that she's gonna be moving there with her mom. And I'll try to look at them too, Larry, or you can call me and we can meet there sometime or whatever. I didn't wanna bug you with all the concert stuff that was going on, cause I figured you would ignore them. That's it.
Nothing but them code enforcement issues. I'm gonna get with Chris, I passed along to Michael. The, the yards are already getting up and past the knees.
Seven forty-three west third.
Seven forty-three, right across from me. I've been, I told him once last year.
Did that lady pass away or something that lived?
Did she die? But she got, somebody's over cleaning out the carport. Somebody cleans the house out, but they don't care anything about the yard.
I think a citation's already been sent.
What did you say? Paul, what did you say that?
I was waiting for the meeting to finish.
I think a citation's already been sent.
Yeah, and I think that is gonna go into foreclosure also.
Well, that'll mean the people, there gotta be some heirs there, don't they?
Yes.
They should all, should all take care of the property.
But it's, I've already called about it, cause I passed it.
Yeah.
Last week driving every morning.
I can see a little bit now, so I saw how tall it was.
Thanks, I'm unconscious.
Street light between Ford, um, Ford's and Lafayette's out. So, and that's really the only one I know around.
Man, I got a list up right here. You need to send Larry.
Good, go ahead.
I got a street light for a second.
At four o'clock in the morning, as long as you do, you go check out which streetlights aren't burning. So, uh, that's, that's really the only thing I have, other than I do wanna applaud the police and the, and the fire for what they did at the concert tonight. They did a great job. They really did.
That lady driving the great big limo said, even y'all's police are nice.
Who was that? I saw that.
That thing was unbelievable. How did they get that in there?
She drove, well, I helped her back it up, cause I was leaving and she was trying to back and so I was like, do you need help?
That's the biggest limo I ever saw.
I saw it leave Monmouth when we going to Illinois.
They were eating Mexican one earlier in line.
Figured it's something like them at concert.
She drives a school bus for Robertson County, but that was out of the, though those limos were out of, um, Bowling Green, I think. And she said she does that just weekends and stuff.
Well, this one was as long as from here to.
Yeah.
It's, she told me how many feet shorter it is in the school bus she drives every day.
It looked like it lasted forever.
Well, I know, we ate at dinner at one of the restaurants Friday, Saturday afternoon and I asked and she said they were swamped Friday night. And most of the people from out of town, cause they kept saying, okay, what's your specialty? I know the pizza place down here was very busy. I think Twin Lakes was very busy and I knew Deidre was pretty busy and I don't know about the one on them.
C Cafe was, or Rodney's, whatever.
Yeah, that's, that's where I was at. And they were just.
And they said they were swamped.
Some curious to see.
Restaurant tax.
Yeah, how that would, I mean, how much it's gonna, well, yeah, I mean, it's tourism.
I did think, I wanna know, just that one night, what it did.
I wish there was a way to do that.
I went to the restaurant tax for the month of, uh, yeah, I thought about two, man.
That's it, Paul.
I got one thing, you know, Larry, uh, and A B, you may tell me, we don't wanna even tackle this. But we do have a copy of an ordinance from Alexandria, Kentucky. But I've noticed, Larry and I talked about, if you drive up Main Street especially, people go and mow their yards and keep them all nice and neat. But that little strip between the sidewalk and the curb is getting knee high. They won't mow them.
Nice.
They got used to Rip and his.
Yeah, they got, that's, I, I did have a complaint about that, but I just kinda, he complained about that yesterday, so I didn't say.
This is an ordinance where, and I haven't read it all, I haven't, A B basically says that you're, the homeowner is responsible for keeping that trimmed, just like he is his yard. I really thought we already, I thought we already had it, to be honest with you, but Mary can't find anything in there.
People just did it, uh, Currie keeps her yard pretty till Rip started and that out there, up, that city and county take care of it.
I can't believe that, I can't, I can't imagine living there and letting that twelve inches grow up.
Well, older we get, the more realized, a lot of people do think that's stupid.
So.
Yeah, that's part of the city right away.
It's, it's state property.
It's state right away, I think.
But technically, state right away, if you look at it, goes way, way up in the middle of the, a lot of them's front yards.
Yeah, past the sidewalk usually.
Well, of course, the problem with the ordinance is, can, can you require somebody to maintain property that's not theirs? I, I think it's a good idea. I can't imagine that you wouldn't mow it if you're mowing your yard.
Decent to you mow.
Cause it's right in front of your property.
Yeah.
But the more fundamental question is, can you require somebody to maintain what's not theirs?
Well, that's why we got that from another city for you to look. So, I don't, I don't expect to do any action tonight. It's just something that.
I don't want to tell Rip what not to do.
Well, no, but.
All right.
He said he knows, he's known next meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I didn't, wasn't expecting tonight, but that's just, we were trying to get some information together. Larry, do you have anything?
Uh, yeah, I got a couple things for the whole session. Uh, I, I know most of the visibility at the park on the concert was, was police presence, fire department getting in and out, but behind the scenes, uh, we worked well over a hundred hours overtime prepping for this event. The girls working the office, taking calls, going and picking up supplies for us. So, I think they are, need to be in the conversation as this event going off very well. I know you've made comment, police and fire, they done a great job.
They do. But, and I, and I forgot, they came and walked here. I, I did see them.
You know, we, we, we done everything we could with Joe Beth. She done a great job. It was a huge success. And it was a total team, collaborative effort. Uh, so I, I just don't wanna leave.
Yeah, you're right. I, I apologize for not including that.
My guys, my guys stayed there three thirty Saturday morning, tearing down, come back at seven to finish picking up trash.
And get ready for an eighteen-team baseball tournament that was going on at the park.
So, you know, it, it, it was, it was a long week. That's why the crowd needs to be three thousand or less.
Speaking of trash, what happened to all the beer cans?
I let my guys pick them up and sell them.
Well, I started saying, it's a shame.
I, I went in there Saturday morning, told him the same thing. I said, y'all can just sell them.
He said, we just drove, drove two cans, one for garbage, one for the, for the aluminum. I'm like, hey, awesome, pick up, let's go.
I'm happy to hear that, cause I want stuff recycled.
Uh, everything went off as, as well as, as we had hoped. Uh, but I, you know, I really think forty-two hundred is a little pushing us a little bit. I mean, we, we stopped pretty much everything we was doing all week long.
Well, but it won't be quite as much from the next one, cause you all were doing a lot of stuff on the amphitheater. You all were doing a lot of stuff trying to get the concession stand finished and, you know, we were still moving coolers in the week before and a lot of stuff that's not going to happen the next time.
We were moving stuff in the day of. I mean.
Now, I'm talking about.
Larry and I moved a bunch of stuff that morning.
I'm talking about hardware equipment.
It, it was, it was a push. I mean, it was, uh, I don't wanna go back there again.
I mean, the guy was there the Fri-, Friday morning trimming out the post on the front porch of the concession stand.
Yeah, he left about three o'clock.
Oh, well, I was there, but I don't know when he left.
Well, the first big one, the next one's gonna be easier. You know what to do, you get it all together, it gets easier as time goes.
Didn't you just feel though, like, uh, a weight lifted off your shoulders and a sense of accomplishment?
I was called at six o'clock, was moving stuff back to the baseball tournament.
I mean, after all, Sunday, did you feel good Sunday?
He didn't feel anything Sunday.
I'm still tired. Uh, one issue that I had is Beaverman Housing Authority. They are supposed to be paying something, you can call it in lieu of taxes, that they have not paid the last two years. Uh, they had always paid sixty-five, sixty, six hundred dollars a year. Um, I think that Amy had said they had a new attorney or new financial guy. He can run some numbers. He said they should be paying, I think she said ninety-two hundred. And they still have not paid. So, they are two years behind. We need to get this kind of, I don't know if it's something we need to draft a letter or a blog, but.
Remind me, we'll start with the phone call first, if that's okay with everybody. Just, I didn't realize. I knew we had problems once before, but I didn't, I thought it'd all been kept current since then.
Do you know if there's been any contact made to this office?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. But they, they keep on thinking they don't have to pay taxes, cause they're part of the city. Well, their, their financial guy had said, well, you should be paying ninety-two hundred or whatever. And they still haven't paid what they normally pay, which is sixty-five. So, uh, it's become, it's, it's become an issue. Uh, Hickory Drive, we talked about it. Chris Smith got back with me today to black top, re-black top the street with base and everything. Uh, almost seventy-six thousand dollars. That is two inches of base, inch of leveling, inch of surface. So, that is in a budget too.
It is?
I put, I put it in there.
You and I had talked about Hickory.
A bunch of several, we had a few soft places and of course, the gravel was not as thick as it should be in, in, you know, the base and, and the surface or whatnot. But, uh, we, we dug some soft place out in, in a hill and of course, this winter that we had with all the rain and whatnot, uh, it created more of an issue. So, we had thought about going there and just patching, but I didn't wanna waste the money. So, we, I, I felt that it'd be better, we just go in there and, and bite a bullet and.
Okay, cause that was the last that you were not talking about.
Does water stand around there, Larry? In the ditches and stuff?
It was standing everywhere.
Huh?
It was standing everywhere.
Then your, your road will never fix it, don't matter how much base you put down. If you can't get the water away from underneath the road, the road will not last and there's nothing you can do to fix it.
Well, it.
On a typical season, does it?
It was not prepared correctly.
Well, that's why I say, but you have to get the water away from it.
It's ditched pretty good on.
But isn't that where floods? I thought that's where that woman was complaining about a flood was Hickory Drive.
This, this is a new Hickory from Charleneine back to Main Street. You know, there's supposed to be six inches of gravel, there may be two. And, and something else that, that hurts that area is on a new subdivision, you go in, you spend all this money on, on prepping the street and then you build a house and a concrete truck, truck drives up to the edge of the curb and it breaks it off. And it just keeps on, keeps on. Is there's, can we have them bond the road? When they build a house? Can they not be bonded?
If it was a subdivision development, there was, there was some kind of bonding procedure for it.
Your subdivision was supposed to be bonded to get the streets in correctly before you all take them. You know, the streets themselves, so.
Well, we, we should, we should never take a street into subdivision done one hundred percent. So, this, it's, it's, it's an issue.
Cause that was part of what you had talked about.
Cause I know the ones, the two we did was, I think you took them in, but we, we had it set up where we had to come in and black top them before you finalized. Cause we went on gravel for.
I know when they had bonded roads for.
Six, eight months.
Bonded roads for the coal mines. When they got done with their, all their work, they closed the mine. They did their reclamation and then they fixed the road. That was the last thing they did, was fix the road. Because the county would not, or the city, or whatever it was involved. Because the county would not, or the city or whatever it was involved with, would not take it over until they were guaranteed, no more coal trucks were gonna be hauling on it, period. And that's kinda what you need to do with subdivision, until there's no, not gonna be any more concrete trucks going in there. Or one or two's not gonna kill it, but you have ten or twelve going in there every summer, you're gonna damage that, that road, it don't matter what you kinda road you got. A lot of weight put, being put right in the center of the road.
You can require whatever you wanna require, but one, once it's dedicated. And once the city accepts it.
It's.
It's ours, it's the city's.
Well, I, I wanna hit it, that's included in the budget, so, you know, to, to go in and.
When are you thinking that the work will be done?
Chris told me they was gonna be back in, uh, first of June. He said they could do the work first of June and bill us comes Ju, comes July one, which will be on the next fiscal year. So, I, I got a word in generalizer for it. Uh, that's on my head for public.
AV, do you have anything for going to closed session?
I did, one minute. Uh, we've already discussed this and Mayor, I already showed you this, just pass those down. That, that's the short amendment that we made to the police policy. I've already given it to a clerk to be, uh, to be added. Relative to the officers taking.
I want one copy, let me see.
However, the vehicle outside of county.
Yeah, I'll stick that.
Okay.
I just think, I, I thought I had two sheets too, but I didn't, there's that one.
Okay, so we do need a closed session?
That's already passed.
Yeah.
We passed that last night, last year.
Make the motion that we go into closed session. Where is closed session?
I'm just glad I got this.
Well, we're going up here and stand and.